Six o'clock, let's bring this zoning board of appeals meeting for August 5th, 2021 to order. And good to see, I think roll call, we have full attendance here, nobody's on vacation or anything, so great to see every. Great to see everybody, first time I think since pre-COVID, we've all been here and attendance, awesome to see. So we'll call the order, the roll call minutes, anybody have a chance, those who were in attendance last month to review the minutes? Any edits? Motions?
Motion to approve minutes.
Second, excellent, okay. All those in favor, approve minutes from July are approved, thank you. So I'll move on to the preamble before we get into tonight's cases. And Paul wanted to speak, did Paul, you want to address the? Board and audience?
Very quickly, I wanted to bring to your attention that the city has changed its meeting policies. That's due to the new state requirements with the ending of the state of emergency. Meetings have to be conducted in person again without the Zoom option. So this is the city's very last hybrid meeting that has the full-on Zoom option where people can participate. Over Zoom and people could participate. This will end, starting at the August meeting, we'll go back to entirely in person. Then of course, things may change based on. Based on whether we're kind of health-wise, but. For right now, the plan is to go back to entirely in-person meeting, there will be a stream. The people can view, but they can't participate via Zoom anymore.
Excellent, thanks Paul, and that takes effect next month, because we, tonight, we have Zoom, right? Yeah, great, thank you. All right, the chairman's preamble, this mic is really sensitive tonight, I guess I'm booming here. The zoning board of appeals is charged with the responsibility of granting variances to ordinance requirements after determining whether there exists an undue hardship upon an applicant. In determining whether or not to grant a variance, the board shall apply the criteria specified in the city code of ordinances to the facts of each case. The zoning board of appeals does not create zoning or can it change zoning? Matters brought before the zoning board of appeals are to be concerned only with variances from requirements of the zoning ordinance. For the sign ordinance and development and environmental ordinance. The board has no authority to grant variances for use, density, or height. Further, the board hears cases requesting an appeal to a staff interpretation or decision on these same ordinances. Final decisions of the zoning board of appeals may be appealed by petitioning the Superior Court of DeKalb County within 30 days after the decision is rendered. All right, we'll move on to tonight's cases. I should have memorized, but did not have a copy of the. Uh huh. I got it. So first new business is ZBA 21-17, variance from chapter 27, section 58, to allow an increase in lot coverage. From 39.71%, to 43.96% in order to construct a swimming pool and spa in the backyard. Madeline, you want to present the overview for the city?
Okay, so the first case on the agenda is ZBA 21-17, 1900 Walberry Drive. Requesting a lot coverage variance. The property, this is, these are the existing conditions on the right-hand side of the screen, you can see photos of the backyard, which is fairly level. The only other improvement in the rear is the attached deck and patio. The current lot coverage is 39.71%. So this, the maximum lot coverage in this district is 40%, so that really doesn't leave any room for additional improvements. Just some background on the property, it's located in the Heritage at Dunwoody, it's a newer neighborhood, the house was built in 2016. This is the site plan showing the location of the pool. It is, excuse me, it's in the rear of the yard. It would be 499 square feet with a 470 square foot pervious pavement deck. The total lot coverage would be 43.96%. The pervious pavers, I just like to note, are exempt from the lot coverage calculation, just so you know. This is the, on the right hand, I'm sorry, having problems with my presentation. On the right-hand side of the screen, you can see a graphic where I've highlighted other properties in the neighborhood that have pools. It's 14 in total, so this is quite a common improvement in the neighborhood. This lot in particular, though, is smaller than most of the lots here, and thus has a smaller buildable area. One thing I'd like to note is the applicant has made efforts, like I said, to reduce their impervious area by using those pervious pavers. Overall, staff recommends approval conditioned to the site plan with the exception that the pool and decking meet the required 10-foot setback. But overall, that's all I have for you this evening, if you have any questions, I'm available.
Great, thanks, Madeline. Do we have anyone representing the applicant to speak on behalf and state the case for the variance and the hardship involved? I see him, yes, Mr. Tully, would you want to speak to, on behalf of the applicant? You're on mute, if you want to talk.
I apologize. So we started working with the McCarthy's and we were provided a as-built survey from the builder on the home. And it was inaccurate. It showed that they did have room for us to add a small pool project. When we started doing our site plan to submit to the city of Dunwoody is when we found out that, hey, these numbers aren't really correct. Basically, the builder overbuilt the deck and he overbuilt the driveway. From what was on the original plan, so the McCarthy's purchased the house believing that they'd have room. For a 500 to 800 square foot project. And again, from the survey that we worked with when we sold them the pool, they had adequate space. But then we found out that the deck is much bigger than what was on the survey. The builder, just, he made it bigger and he also made the driveway bigger. So we kind of got into a pickle. You know, we've sold the McCarthy's a pool, they bought a house based on the fact that they could have a pool. And we get in there and we find out we have bad numbers. So we redesigned everything to make it as small as possible. We implemented the use of pervious pavers so that we can reduce it to the bare minimum. And so that's what we've done. You know, they purchased a home wanting to have a pool in a neighborhood that has lots of pools. So that's why we've applied for the variance.
Okay, thank you.
I believe the McCarthy's are here also.
If they'd like to speak on behalf of themselves, they can, or anyone else who wants to speak in favor of this project, certainly step up. Just state your name and address, please, thank you.
I'm Galen McCarthy, I live at 1900 Walberry Drive. And just to reiterate and support what Mr. Tully said. When we were out walking the lots with the builder. Construction had already started. We told them from the beginning, we wanted a pool, he was out there saying, okay, you've got a 10-foot setback, let's measure that off, you're okay. So this whole time, we thought that this would be a great location, we relocated from Woodstock so we'd be close in. And so this has been our stumbling block, I mean, it's not. It's not a huge problem in life compared to everything else we're going through, but it would, it would make it much more pleasant.
Okay, great, thank you. I suspect there isn't, but anyone oppose this project either on, online or in person? Doesn't look like it, so we'll close the comment and go to a board discussion.
Yeah, I got a, I got one right out of the bat. It's a beautiful neighborhood, I know the, I know the neighborhood well, I have a friend who's got a, his brother lives in there. Your property is currently listed for sale, so I don't know what bearing that has on this variance or what have you. Or, but can you kind of explain the story behind that? Because I'm a little hesitant to approve anything, one way or the other, if this is something you're not going to be in currently.
Okay, I'll leave that for you to answer.
Yes, we had contracted to build the pool. We have paid them a significant deposit to get everything started. We have since bought a two-bedroom, two-bath condo in Florida. And we came back and since our kids, who were all in New York, came back to Atlanta. They're like, we really don't need a house this big for two of us, why don't we see if we can sell it while the prices are up right now? So that's how we got where we are.
Shouldn't we be unsuccessful in selling it, so we don't have anything else bought or anything to live in permanently here in Atlanta?
Nothing.
We'll be staying, so we're kind of running this on parallel tracks.
Yeah, that's great, I was trying to avoid, I know, not that it's really in my business anyway, but you know, flipping and that kind of thing, so.
Well, a question for the city then. You might want to stay close, you can pull up a chair. If we were to grant a variance tonight. And the pool doesn't, the construction doesn't start, does the variance go with the properties or the people that buy the house? The next owners would get the variance?
Yeah, so the variance runs with the land, it transfers between property owners, but there is in the conditions a time limit for when it has to be used.
Right.
Thank you for that clarification.
I have a question, not related to the sale of the property. So the pool decking must be at least 10 feet from the side and the rear property lines. I didn't verify in the plan, but do you happen to know? I mean, I'm assuming you are at least 10 feet from the side and the rear. And Madeline, I don't know if it's possible to go back to the plan.
I can speak to that, yeah, we've met all the setbacks.
Yeah, I just wanted, I think there's showing on the plan a little bit of encroachment into the 10-foot side setback. So I just added that stipulation in my conditions, just for when they come for the full permit, that they actually do meet the 10-foot side setback. So that's required by regulations.
So.
There's only a portion of the deck. That, and it was my understanding that we could exceed the 10-foot setback with just the deck.
So for the decking, the decking also has to be 10 feet from the property line, so that's why we.
Oh, okay. So we have to shift that over then, that's not a problem to do.
Okay.
Yeah, wouldn't bear into the imperviousness, but you certainly have to maintain the.
Yeah, it was my understanding, we could go past the, the, down to, I thought it was down to five feet. But alls we have to do is slide that down, the pool itself is not in the setback, it's just a little bit of the decking. But we can truncate that and that'll even reduce the impervious a little bit more.
Thank you.
Board, any other questions? Comments? Have a motion?
I move to approve the request for variance from chapter 27, section 27-58, to allow an increase in lot coverage to 43.96%. To construct the swimming pool with spa, subject to the conditions presented by staff. One, construction must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan prepared by Tully Pools and dated 4/21/21. Pool decking must be at least 10 feet from the side and rear property line. If construction does not commence within two years of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void.
Second. First and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Next, new business. ZBA case 21-19, variance from section 27-58 to allow encroachment into the street setback. And allow the proposed lot coverage to exceed the maximum.
Okay, so the next presentation I have is regarding 1987 Winchester Court. To allow encroachment in the street setback and to allow an increase in the lot coverage. This is a photo of the front of the home in the neighborhood. It currently has just one small stoop leading up to the front door. It sits about 27 feet from the front property line. So the existing home, this is the survey on the right-hand side, the existing home is considered legal, non-conforming. It currently has a lot of different encroachments. The first encroachment is in the front setback. Along Winchester Court and then also in the second street setback in the rear along Dunwoody Club Drive. And then also in the southern side setback. And also the existing lot coverage exceeds the maximum of 35%, 5.6%. Essentially, most neighborhoods in, or excuse me, most houses in this neighborhood sort of face this issue. It was developed under standards that we don't exactly know what they were. We can't really find the history on the development of this neighborhood. It's in the, it was DeKalb County records and we just don't have them. But it's currently zoned RM-100, which is what imposes all of those setbacks. It doesn't necessarily fit the character of the area, but we assume sometime in like maybe the 90s, when they did a big city or countywide. Map update that they just assigned it sort of one of these zoning districts for higher density. And the setbacks just didn't match it. So this is a fairly common problem in the neighborhood. The applicant is proposing to add a six-foot porch onto the front of their house. Like I said, it sits 27 feet from the front property line, the setback is supposed to be 30 feet. So with that addition of six feet, it would be about 20 feet from that front property line. And it would marginally increase the impervious surface by about 125 square feet. This is an elevation, just showing you what it would look like. So on the left-hand side of the screen, I have a little graphic that I did based on my research. I just used our GIS map to sort of measure out what the existing setbacks are on a lot of the homes in this part of the neighborhood. So you can see that they vary, this one actually has one of the bigger setbacks for the neighborhood of 27 feet. Most are sitting in around the five-foot range. It's a very dense neighborhood, I don't know if you guys have ever driven through it, but most of them are right up close to the street, they're very dense. Sort of has more of a new urbanist feel. You guys are familiar with that, but essentially, there's really no way for the existing house. To meet any of the existing criteria, there's no room for any improvements based on these current standards, there's not even a way. Even if it were like built differently to meet any of the setbacks, which you can see in the graphic on the right. So overall, staff does find that this presents a real practical difficulty to the applicant. And we do recommend approval. With conditions tying them to what's shown on the site plan, and once again, just a time limit of two years placed on it. Again, I'm available if you guys have any questions.
Thanks, Madeline. Would the applicant like to speak on behalf of themselves? I'm not sure if they're present or online. Great.
My name's Robert Platt and I represent the Lloyd's. And I don't think I can add anything that she did. That was a brilliant presentation, thank you so much, and I just wanted to come up and say to all of you, don't chew peppermint gum with a mask. It's terrible to me, so, thank you.
Mr. Platt, can you? Give us your address or tell us your affiliation with the applicant?
I'm the designer. I'm a residential designer, I've been in Atlanta for 42 years.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else want to speak in favor of the variance? Anyone in opposition? Okay, once again, we'll close the public comment and the board discussion. Anybody have any questions for the applicants? We've seen this before, and you're right, Madeline, I mean, Woodlands is one of the first quote cluster neighborhoods in Dunwoody, right? And it's got, we've had a lot of cases before us in the history of the zoning board, and they're all unique, but yet similar. So, no, that's, it's not uncommon.
I'll move.
Got to move?
I move to approve the request for a variance from chapter 27, section 27-58, to allow encroachment. Into the street setback and allow the proposed lot coverage to exceed the maximum, subject to conditions presented by staff. One, construction must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan. And there's an appendix A, and then if construction has not commenced within two years of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void.
Care a second, we have first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Last case on the docket tonight is ZBA case 21-20, variance from chapter 16, section 78, to increase the impervious service area. By 256 square feet within the stream buffer. Madeline, I'm going to do your magic again.
Okay, so the last case this evening is 1636 Arno Court. They are proposing to put a roof over their existing deck, which does encroach into the stream buffer. These are some photos, just illustrating on the left-hand side, there's the existing deck. Decks are considered pervious, and then once you add a roof to them, they're considered impervious, which necessitates this variance request. And then the right-hand picture just shows a photo of the backyard, right behind the black fence. The property sort of drops down, and that's where the stream is located. This is the survey slash site plan, you can see that they've got a 16 by 16 deck on the back of their house, and that's what they'll be covering. And this is an elevation, just showing what the roof will look like once it's constructed. Essentially, the stream buffers impact a majority of the lot. It's around 18,750 square feet of buffer on this 24,500 square foot lot. The improvement will be minimally intrusive, it's really only going to increase the impervious and the stream buffer by 1.5% on this lot. Enclosing a deck is a pretty standard minor improvement for most homeowners, and so we feel that denying the variance would, you know, rob them of reasonable use of their property, and so we are recommending approval, essentially tying them to the site plan, and again, that two-year time limit.
Thanks, Madeline. Will the applicant want to say anything in further to support their variance request?
Jared Thomas, 1636 Arno Court, and I'd just like to say, you know, we want to do it just to, for our family to enjoy the property more in the outdoors, and you know, we feel that enclosing the deck would do that, so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone in opposition of this variance request? All right, we will close the public comment. Board, any questions?
Just a statement, the on our screen, board, the staff recommendations go with the previous case before us, so the staff recommendations were printed for us are the correct ones, if anyone makes a motion, do it off the
Good call.
Already pointed out to me.
I got a question to the city, when we talk about the reference to the stream buffer, which buffer are we talking about, 75 foot, 50, 25? State, City of Dunwoody?
Right, so in the City of Dunwoody, we actually don't separate our buffer out, it's just one contiguous 75-foot city buffer. And then, but the first 25 feet of that buffer is also shared with the state. So they have their 25-foot buffer, and then we are also on top of that. This deck is about 40 feet from the stream buffer.
Okay, so the references to that 75 foot in general, right?
Yes. Madeline, I was gonna, sorry. And I know this is minimal, right, as far as the, it was like 1.5%, but is there any mitigating factors for runoff or anything that they've discussed, typically when you cover a deck or something like that, right, there's there's some kind of provision for runoff and drainage and so forth that they've included in their plan, I didn't see that, but I may have missed it.
No, so there's really no mitigation, and it's so minor that we really don't see any major impacts to the buffer from the improvement, so.
Yeah, I would agree, okay. I mean, yeah. All right, board, anything else? Have a motion?
I move to approve this.
Do we have a second? Tara, we have a second, first and a second, all those in favor?
Do I need to?
You need to read.
To you reading.
Yeah, no, do you have the, the correct ones, we had to read it in the records.
I do, yes, okay, so my motion was to approve the request for a variance from chapter 16, section 16-78, to allow the increase in impervious surface area within the stream buffer, subject to the conditions presented by staff. One, the deck must be in substantial compliance with the site plan, which is in appendix A dated May 31st, 2021. Two, if construction has not commenced within two years of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void. And three, construction shall be with hand tools only, no heavy equipment or vehicles allowed in the stream buffer.
Thank you. Carrie, still on a second, great, okay. We have a motion and a second, now, all those in favor? Anamis, approval. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Any other business, I know Paul had some at the beginning, but I don't think any other business anyone wants to bring up? Public comment? A board comment?
I always want to thank Madeline for an incredibly impressive presentation and all the fact finding and research that you do that goes into these slides we see and the handouts we get, thank you so much for making our job so easy.
Yeah, you're here, you're here on that.
You're here.
Okay, with that, we are adjourned, thanks, board.